Good evening. We're going to start our meeting with our normal update.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Lauren Schwartz. If you were in North Penn High School last week, these talented gentlemen could have serenaded you for Valentine's Day.
Nurses office, we would just like to thank you so much for keeping everybody not sick in this room, and we wish you guys to have a very happy, happy Valentine's Day.
Students and staff could arrange for the quartets to stop by offices and classrooms for a short, yet sweet, musical interlude. Dancing for close to 12 hours can be exhausting, but the entire Montgomery Elementary School community kept the beat strong for a great cause during their annual mini-thon. The all-day dance marathon raised over $22,000 for the Four Diamonds Organization, which supports kids with cancer. The mini-thon is held in conjunction with the annual Penn State University's thon. The North Penn High School Indian Cultural Association held their annual Republic Night celebration. Various dances, colorful fashion shows, and the Mr. and Miss Republic Night competition entertain the appreciative crowd. The event is organized each year by the high school students in celebration of India's independence. And finally, the dark side prevailed in the Student Government Association's first annual Wing Bowl competition. With the moniker "The Dark Side," the high school's administrative team beat out five other teams in the final round to win the coveted Wing Bowl trophy. Remember to check out our videos online at youtube.combackslashmtv. For North Penn Television, I'm Lauren Schwartz. Have a good night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Good evening again. It is our time to recognize the accomplishments of our students and staff and the district as a whole, so Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. It is, in fact, an honor to recognize students from the 2014-2015 North Penn High Marching Knights. And with us this evening, we have Michael Britcher, band director.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dietrich, and members of the board. It's always a pleasure to be here with you to speak about the accomplishments of our band program. You know, it's amazing that it's been two months now since our marching band season came to an end. We are always busy as a band program, and we do have five members of the marching knights that are here representing the whole. We chose not to bring all 117 of them out and parade them in front of you this evening, but we have joining us this evening, we have Jared Boyden, our senior drum major, Dan Chapman, a member of our tuba section, Paige Connor, one of our color guard section leaders, Emily Murray, our color guard president, and Stephen Pop, our junior drum major, who will be taking over the mantle of leadership next year when he is a senior. One of the things that I always think is just incredible about marching band is that it's one of the only activities that when we talk about, oh, it's a team thing, or the team really came together, it truly is amazing to see it happen with this group because, as you know, if you've been around the marching knights, there is no bench, there is no second string, there's no JV. All of the students who participate in it are on the field all the time, participating every single step. They're all working together to accomplish amazing things. And over the course of the fall, our team really came together and just had an amazing end to their season. We had three very, very significant wins at the end of our season. First, in order, we were the Class 4A champions at the Bands of America Eastern Regional, held at the University of Delaware down in Newark, Delaware. That is only the second time in the storied history of our program that we have been named a Bands of America class champion. A few weeks later, the first weekend in November, we went to Annapolis, Maryland, to participate in the Music in Motion Series presented by U.S. Bands and the Cadets Drum and Bugle Corps. There were more than 30 bands that participated in that event. It was a prelim-final competition. We came in third overall at prelims and really stepped up our game at the night show and won finals, so we were the champions there. And of course, we ended our season November 15th this year at the Meadowlands Stadium up in East Rutherford, New Jersey, competing in U.S. Bands Group Five Open National Competition. And we were very, very pleased and fortunate to come away as the Group Five Open National Champions. And we were able to defeat a very, very talented band from Massachusetts Dartmouth High School. In fact, it's the first time that we've defeated them in competition, and they've gotten the best of us the last few years, so it was nice to return that favor to them. So it was a tremendously successful season for the marching knights. And I wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Dietrich and the members of the board who are here for your continued support of our band program and especially our marching knights. Thank you.
Before you call up each student for us, I want to ask you guys, are you missing those hot August days right now?
Yes.
Yes. We'll call that.
All right. Very good. So once again, the students that we have representing us, Jared Boyden, our senior drum major.
Congratulations, sir.
Dan Chapman, who is a member of our tuba section. Paige Connor, one of our color guard section leaders. Emily Murray, our color guard presidents. And Stephen Pop, our junior drum major.
As they come around, guys, I would love an opportunity for the full morning administration to congratulate each and every one of you. And would you follow them up for us?
Of course.
So come on through.
Good job. Good luck.
I'm listening to all the taste of what you guys are there sweating.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
I absolutely have a lot of respect for you guys out there sweating.
(inaudible).
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 Another round of applause, please.
As they exit, I can't even express to you what it looks like in August, in that 100-degree weather. Phew. And they're full dress, and they're out there with their headgear. It's amazing. They do far more than that. They do far more than that. All right. Great recognition. It's a wonderful time to do this. I do want to make the public aware that the board met in executive session February 19th today, from 6:45 to 7:30 p.m., to discuss matters of personnel and potential litigation. And we're going to move forward with our audience of citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook for us. Okay, let's move forward with recommend approval of the minutes of the February 10th, 2015 Special Action Work Session as circulated. So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Questions or comments about the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's move into our committee reports, and we'll start with Personnel. Mr. Kerr.
Your first tonight.
Personnel Committee met in executive session February 3rd, 2015, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Let's move forward with Support Services. Mr. Schilling.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shipinski. The Support Service and Safe School Committee met on Thursday, February 5th, and discussed the following. The committees were presented with a secured entrance presentation outlining the administration's and Montgomery School Safety Coordinator, Mr. Stephen Beck's recommendations to improve the entrances of Bridle Path, Gwinnett Square, Walton Farm, Gwinor, Knapp, and Oak Park. In addition, there will be improvements made to the secured entries of all the elementary and middle schools. The recommendations were accepted, and the administration was instructed to move forward with bidding the project. The project is scheduled to be completed by the start of 215-216 school year. Also, the Support Service Committee discussed the facility used by a group of residents to rent Bridle Path Gym to play basketball Saturday mornings for the remainder of the school year. This request is in accordance with the Policy 1330, Use of School Facilities, and this request is on this evening's agenda for your consideration. Mr. Snyder discussed the recent electricity procurement lock for the remaining 50% of next summer's electricity supply. The administration was able to take advantage of an extremely low market condition and lock electricity supply at an all-in rate of 5.55 cents per kilowatt hour. This electricity lock is recommended for ratification and is, again, on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting, committee meeting is scheduled, excuse me, to meet on Monday, February 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Educational Service Center. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of Support Services and Mr. Schilling tonight? Let's move forward with Education, Community, and Policy. Mrs. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. This month, the ECP Committee met on Monday, February 9th. At the meeting, the committee considered a revision to School Board Policy Number 6162 regarding volunteers. This policy was rewritten and reviewed by the solicitor to be in compliance with Act 153 of 2014, which requires those volunteering at school-sponsored events to security-appropriate clearances. Effective immediately, new volunteers must obtain a criminal history record from the PA State Police and a child abuse clearance from the PA Department of Public Welfare. Those who have lived in Pennsylvania for less than 10 years will also be required to secure a federal criminal history record. Anyone living in Pennsylvania consistently for 10 years or more can sign an affidavit attesting to not having a federal criminal record. Current volunteers will be required to obtain these clearances as of July 1st, 2015. Also on the agenda was a boundary realignment proposal that would impact all three middle schools and four elementary schools. Due to the increase in enrollment in the Lansdale area, this proposal recommends moving 67 students from York Avenue to Gwinor, 119 students from Knapp to Montgomery, 37 students from Pendale to Pembroke, and 113 students from Pendale to Penfield. Students entering 6th, 8th, and 9th grades in the 2015-16 school year at the impacted schools will have the option to remain in their current building. The committee also received information regarding a grant that is being sought by Extended School Care from the Department of Public Welfare and the Keystone Stars Program. Extended School Care satisfies the criteria for a maximum award of $2,365. The next meeting of the ECP Committee is March 9th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Charnock. Questions or comments for ECP tonight? All right, let's move forward with Finance. Mr. Brown.
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, February 19th. The information items, the revenues, expenses, and balance sheet, current projections, show a near break-even of revenues to expenditures for the fiscal year, even though there was a $4 million deficit when the 2014-15 budget was approved. The EIT report, current collections continue to be ahead of the budget as we should end the year in positive territory for this revenue. Enterprise fund statements, the current net loss in the aquatics program and water polo program was reviewed. Revenue generated from the events in the spring should bring the net income back into the positive. Hatfield Construction Project, the escrow check for the $1.2 million to the Hatfield Township has been returned to the district now that the letter of credit is in place. The budgetary reserve, there has been little activity against the budgetary reserves so far this year. This may be due to enhanced budgeting. Items recommended for work session and action meeting, the budget transfers are on tonight's agenda for approval. The Extended School Care, Ms. Scott, from the Extended School Care, the director, made a presentation and recommended rates for the 2015-16 year. The rates for the 2015 summer camps programs and extended school care rates for 215-16 are on tonight's agenda. 2014 real estate tax liens on tonight's agenda for ratification. The 2015-16 preliminary budget, Mr. Scrocky made a presentation regarding the preliminary budget. The preliminary budget was subsequently approved at the February 10th, 2015 work session. Purchase of school buses, bids, bid results were reviewed with the committee, and the bid award for 10 vehicles is on tonight's agenda for the approval. Next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 23rd, at 6:30 p.m. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of Finance this evening? Safe Schools, Mrs. Murphy.
The Safe Schools and Support Services Committee met jointly on February 5th and discussed the following. As reported by Mr. Schilling, the Safe Schools and Support Services Committee met to observe the administration and Montgomery School Safety School Coordinator, Mr. Stephen Beck's recommendations to improve the entrances of Bridle Path, Gwinnett Square, Walton Farm, Gwinor, Knapp, and Oak Park. In addition, improvements to all elementary and middle schools will be made. The Safe Schools Committee accepted the recommendations and instructed the administration to move forward with the bidding of this project. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for Monday, March 9th, at 6:00 p.m. here at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Safe Schools this evening?
6:00. We have our ECP at 6:30. Yeah.
North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. Foundation Trustees held its first meeting of 2015, at which time lots of great news was shared. First of all, it is Foundation February, and all the accounts is a great success. The Foundation's student members, North Penn High School sophomores Taylor Young and Aaron Hubner, developed a plan to get our schools more involved in fundraising at their individual sites during the month of February. Currently, nine of our schools are participating in various ways, including Spirit Days, Coin Wars, and spreading information about the Foundation. So far, nearly $1,500 has been raised. I want to thank the staff members at these schools for the hard work they put into the Foundation in February. And I'd like to recognize Taylor, who's in the audience. Would you like to stand? These are her ideas. And she has, I cannot tell you what these two young people on our committee have done. Thank you. We also discussed and are very excited about a new event we are holding this spring called Night at the Hatfield Altery Museum on Saturday, May 16th, if you got that, Saturday, May 16th. The Foundation will take over this little-known gem in our community. In addition to viewing classic cars and pop culture memorabilia from throughout the decades at this wonderful museum, attendees can participate in slot car racing, basket raffles, and a 50/50. Also included is entertainment and food and drink, and the caterer is great for this kind of food, so we're looking forward to this. And the tickets are only $30, so mark that on the calendar now. Leading up to the Night at the Museum, we will also hold our Second Annual Online Silent Auction. Just like last year, it will feature one-of-a-kind North Penn experiences like a birthday party at MBH Swimming Pool and lunch with your principal and your superintendent. But new this year, we are adding a high-quality general items like timeshare stays at restaurant gift certificates. The online auction will be held from May 5th to May 15th. Also discussed was the upcoming 50th anniversary of the North Penn School District. The Foundation, along with the North Penn Alumni Association, plan to work with the school district's Office of School and Community Engagement to schedule a series of events in 2015-2016 to celebrate our golden anniversary. February has also been a busy month for grant implementation, as nine separate innovative projects are being held in our schools. This includes a Lit Fest at North Penn High School, a visit from a Holocaust survivor at Walton Farm, and a STEM project at Penfield Middle School. Speaking of grants, North Penn staff should be on the lookout for an email announcing the grant request for the 2015-2016 school year will be accepted during March. This will happen in March, and applications will be due in mid-May. Any questions about the Foundation can be directed to Christine Liberowski at the ESC. Thank you, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions for the North Penn Educational Foundation? Let's move with the North Monco Technical Career Center report, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening. Yeah, we met last night, and we had, we met in an executive session to discuss matters of personnel. We also, along with the regular business actions, we approved a reissue of the bond that was used to renovate the tech school three years ago. It reduced the cost of the bond by approximately $1.1 million, I believe.
I know what our savings is, which is approximately $224,000.
Yeah, so over-
Wasn't the bond just issued?
They refinanced the bond because they found that we could get more of a savings, and actually even more of a savings than our last meeting, so.
Yeah, really good rate. It was an $8.8 million reissue of the bond. It did not extend the term of the bond, so everything's going to be paid off at the original time, and we ended up saving about $120,000 that we're, that we're-
We're saving too.
Yeah, we're saving $120,000 off the original interest rate that was in place. We spoke about ways to improve and increase revenue for the continuing education program. We reviewed the committed enrollment for new students coming into the program for next school year, and we decided to have our next meeting on March 16th. Anything else, Mrs. Leonard?
No.
Okay. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions for North Monco Technical Career Center? Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
The MC IU Board met on Wednesday, January 28th, at the MC IU offices. This will most likely be the last meeting at the old site. The February meeting should be held at our new address, 2 West Lafayette Street, Norristown. The results of the Mercer Study commissioned by the MC IU last fall were discussed finally, and we will experience some changes in the structure here by the information learned from the study, and we will be making lots of changes at the IU because of that. There is a tentative agreement in the teacher negotiations held since last January. The board voted to accept it. Hopefully, the teachers will vote next week, and in February, it will then be settled, and the teachers did vote a few days ago, and it is settled. The move to the Newman Building is scheduled for the first week of February, which is going on as we speak. The board approved a new position, a conference center facilitator, to support the new conference center, and that will really be needed. Hopefully, the IU will be bringing in a lot of their activities because of our new facility. The ESEA is slated to be reauthorized in this session of our U.S. Congress. Whether that will happen, I don't know, but it will certainly help funding for us if it does. The next meeting will be on February 25th, 2015. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy.
Thank you. Any questions for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit? All right, let's move forward with our superintendent report. Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. I recommend approval of expulsions for students 0219151 and 0219152, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent. Students, parents, guardians have waived rights to an expulsion hearing.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
I recommend approval of settlement agreements for students 0219153 and 0219154, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent, and approval of an agreement for tuition in lieu of free and appropriate education for student 0219155, whose name is also on file in the office of the superintendent.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval to establish the Extended School Care program fees for the 2015-16 school year, per the attached fee sheets, as described in Item 0515A through C.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? Will this new fee, first off, will this new fee cover some of their additional expenses as they go forward?
Yes, this fee represents about a 1.92% increase over the current year, and Margie Scott does believe this fee will be sufficient to at least break even for the next fiscal year.
Excellent. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to establish the Extended School Care Summer Camp Program price at $245 per week for the 2015 year. It is prorated for the week of June 29th through July 3rd, 2015, per item 0615A through B.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? This is an excellent program, well-attended, without a doubt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend ratification of the submission of the delinquent real estate and interim taxes to the Montgomery County and Bucks County Tax Claim bureaus, per item 0715.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval to allow the Silver Bullets Basketball Group use of the Bridle Path Gymnasium to play basketball through the 2014-15 school year in accordance with School Board Policy 1320, per item 1015.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr.
I hit that button first.
That's right, I hit that button first. Any comments or questions?
Students around, you know, we, y'all have gotten me up on the volunteer requirements now.
Isn't this Saturday morning?
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, every, any time I think of anybody now going into our schools for any amount of time, I'm concerned about meeting the, you know, the volunteer. And the public may not know, but there are just, there's more stringent rules with respect to childcare checks and background checks that everybody on the board now will have to get if they don't already have it, and volunteers and home of school, and I don't know. I mean, I just raise it as something that we may have to think about, even Saturday mornings. I don't know.
Well, I mean, they're not going to supervise children, not going to come into direct contact.
But you don't know.
I don't know. I hope that, you know, probably not, but I don't, because we don't even know what the word-
Why don't we let our solicitor look into it and see if we can determine that, or the administration do that? I think that would probably be more helpful in this matter, but-
Yeah, it may not be anything, but it's just an issue that we need to be mindful of now all the time.
Well, I would think during the week, you might have that issue, since our schools operate for different reasons at night, but on Saturday, I'm not sure if we have an operational thing. I think that's kind of the reason why we have to have this special motion for them, because we really don't operate regularly for this. Special group, that is, I should say it that way. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
I recommend ratification of the electricity transaction with Direct Energy Business for electric, electricity supply for all current North Penn School District accounts, as listed per item 1115.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of the waiver of tuition for the International Friendship Exchange student listed in the agenda for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
Yes. I'm just, I'm very excited. We have waited many years to have our first Japanese exchange student, and she came a few weeks ago. Her name is Yui. She'll be here until next January. She'll be here for the full year. And Nori Koyl, our Japanese teacher at her school in Japan, we've worked on this, and we're now using our fifth visa, and I'm thrilled, and if you're watching, welcome, Yui.
Well done. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
I recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I want to say thank you very much to everyone. I mean, we really appreciate these gifts, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
I beat you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very, thank you.
Recommend approval of bids, per item BA- Recommend approval of bids per item BA five-A through D as listed.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions?
I have a question. Are we, are we buying or leasing? I mean, we, or are we leasing to purchase? I'm confused.
Lease purchase.
It is a lease purchase.
Yes. And the lease terms have not been negotiated at this point. We'll bring that forward at a subsequent Board meeting.
I mean, I, it doesn't matter if they're purchased outright or released. I mean, is, do we get a better deal? I mean, we are going to keep these things for the duration, right?
We're recommending a lease-purchase arrangement simply because of budgetary constraints. To phase the total purchase value in over five years is a lot easier on the budget as opposed to phasing in on one year. So when we consider the deficit, we are looking at the preliminary budget, we thought it was wise to actually pursue the lease approach at this point.
Got it. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
I recommend approval of the personnel items listed A through D.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
I recommend approval of student travel per item BA nine.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per BA ten, copies of which are on file in the office of Business Administration.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kerr. I need a second. Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions to this issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA eleven, copies of which are on file in the office of Special Education.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Kerr.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This concludes the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. We're going to move forward with our Finance report. Mr. Schrocki.
Thank you, Mr. President. This report is for the month of January two thousand fifteen. Cash receipts for the month of January totaled two million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and three cents. Disbursements for the month of January totaled sixteen million sixty-eight thousand three hundred eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. At the end of January, the total available funds for the school district totaled one hundred thirty-one million five hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents. End of report.
Thank you. Could you move forward with the sanction and approval of invoices?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of February, I'm sorry, for the month of January, we have the ratification of disbursements for the month of January two thousand fifteen in the amount of nineteen million two hundred seventy-one thousand twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved. Would you move forward with budget transfers?
Thank you. I recommend approval of the November two thousand fourteen budget transfers in the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-nine cents, as well as the December two thousand fourteen budget transfers in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred fifty dollars per item BA twelve-A through C.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Let's go with federal, state, grants, and other programs. Dr. Holman.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to recommend that you approve Extended School Care, applying for one of the Department of Public Welfare's Keystone Stars Program support grants in the amount of two thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars to support the Extended School Care Program at Hatfield Elementary School.
Well done. We don't have to vote on that, right? It's an informational item, correct?
I think they have to vote on.
Or do we have to accept a grant? Or?
It's approval to apply. Asking for approval to apply, yes.
Yeah, so that needs a motion.
Yep.
All right. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
I have a, I'm sorry. I have a question on grants, but let's get this motion by.
You want to do it after the meeting? Are you going to do it right now?
Well, I heard Sally, Sally Kaufman, has been trying to replace these or get some more defibrillators and batteries for them, as well as these medical carts for all the schools, and to the tune of, I don't know, forty-some, fifty-some thousand dollars. She's been trying for a long, long time. I heard that we put our grant writer on that, and nothing has progressed for the past two months, three months. So I'm curious if I can get an update. I know, I think Steve, you met with her a few weeks ago or a little while ago, so I'm just curious if I could get an update of where we are on trying to get some money for that.